Okay, good evening, everybody. This is our meeting, the Board of Selectmen's meeting on November 17th, 2020. I'd like to read the announcement in accordance with Governor Baker, March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A20. This meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com, and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. This meeting will be broadcasted live on Comcast Channel 12 and can also be viewed on via livestream WHCA TV. It is subsequently be broadcasted on youtube.com. At this time, I'd like all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice. Thank you.
And as customary, if we could, there are a moment of silence for anyone that's in your thoughts, please. I need approval of Bill and Perrow wants.
Who, Brian?
Second. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Except, I need a motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
Go move, Brian.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Schedule hearing, public hearing, for the purpose of determining the residential factor to be applied in the calculations of the percentages of the tax levy to be borne by each class in real and personal property for fiscal year 2021. Who's going to present that? Kathy?
Yes, yep, right here.
Okay, Kathy.
Okay, so, good evening. Yeah, thanks. Good evening, everybody. Just as Dan said, this is the final step in presenting a proposed tax rate to the Department of Revenue for fiscal 2021. We have a few options that are available to us that we're going to discuss and decide on tonight. The hard part is done. The town of Whitman received certification of its submitted valuation of $1,822,896,474 on November 2nd. So we know the value of the town. We know that we want to spend $28,254,896. So using those figures, we estimate a tax rate of $15.50 per 1,000 evaluation. On the following page is a table that shows what a shift in the tax rate would look like in numbers. So we are allowed to either not shift the tax rate or shift it up to 150%. At the top, you can see that the residential portion of the total valuation is 89.62% of the total valuation. So we are, you know, mostly residential community. The balance of the valuation, the 10.38%, is made up of the three remaining classes, which are commercial, industrial, and personal property. With that, you know, genetic makeup, so to speak, it is not something that the board would recommend to shift the tax rate. Where it's mainly residential and the commercial component is so small, they feel that it would be detrimental to, you know, make any shift, and they voted so unanimously at a meeting held earlier today. In addition to maybe splitting the tax rate or not, there are two other options that we need to present to the Board of Selectmen. There's a residential exemption and a small commercial exemption that are available to be exercised. The residential exemption allows a community to grant an exemption to owner occupied residential properties of up to 20%. The exemption shifts a portion of the tax burden right within the residential class away from the lower valued single family homes to the higher value single family homes, multifamily properties, apartment buildings, and non-resident property owners. This exemption is typically adopted in communities that have a really high percentage of rental properties. That is just not the genetic makeup here in Whitman. So that being said, the board has voted not to recommend that option, and they've also wrote, recommended not to, or voted not to recommend the small commercial exemption. And that exemption allows a community to exempt up to 10% of the value of the Class 3 commercial parcels. This option shifts the tax burden from parcels occupied by small businesses to those occupied by other commercial and industrial taxpayers. These eligible small businesses may have an average of no more than 10 employees. But it is important to point out that it is not the business entity that would receive the exemption, but rather the real estate owner. We have a large number of small businesses that have the fewer than 10 employees, and a lot of these businesses are just businesses that are conducted throughout a residential home. So for that reason, again, the Board of Assessors has opted not to recommend submitting that into the Department of Revenue. So I think it is also incumbent upon us to let the Board of Selectmen know that with the numbers, the way they are, and that the numbers that we are going to present to the Department of Revenue allows for a excess levy capacity. The excess levy capacity is the difference between what we are legally allowed to levy and what we actually are planning to levy. And that excess levy capacity is calculated to be $10,950.65, which is pretty good because just the rounding factor for a penny in the tax rate on the valuation that we currently have is like $18,000. So to be at 10, I think it's pretty good. So that is what we are obligated to present to you folks. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, Kathy, Dan here. So what you're asking the board is to stay with the factor of one?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. We've done that as long as I've been volunteering for the town, whether it was the Finance Committee or the Board of Selectmen and any other boards that have been on. We've always gone with the factor of one to invite businesses to come into the town.
Right, well, we're so heavily residential community, it just makes no sense to do otherwise.
Right, I agree. Anybody else have questions for Kathy?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Kathy, do you need separate motions for the three items, the factor, the residential, and the commercial exemption?
Yes, sir, exactly. I need a vote from the Board of Selectmen on each one of those options. So when the board is ready, we can take each one of them individually and get it down nice and legit.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions before we take those votes?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
So Kathy, last year or two years ago, we had a lot of discussions about excess levy capacity, how we assess the timing of bringing in the company that we use to assess properties. Has there been any major changes or have you noticed a difference this year? Because it seems like in $10,000, you're nailing it.
Well, yeah, so thank you for asking, and I'm glad you noticed that. So one of the things that I did last year, especially after we, you know, had the discussion at the last classification hearing, is I reached out to the two major developers, which was Steve Egan and Jason Kennedy, for the projects that they had going on. And they worked closely with me, especially regarding the timeframe of when we pick up the assessment, because as you know, we can pick up the new growth over a period of more than one fiscal year. So I feel like I had a better estimation of, you know, what the new growth was going to be. And certainly, I think that had something to do with, you know, the excess levy coming in pretty nicely.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, Kathy, would you like to go down each motion that we need to make?
Yes, that would be great. So I'm asking for a motion to maintain a single tax rate.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just want to state for the record that there, this is an open forum. There are currently, nobody in the waiting room, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, seeing that, Justin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Kathy, the next?
Yes, the next vote would be not to adopt a residential exemption.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And the last one?
Yes, is not to adopt the small commercial exemption.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Randy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Does that cover it, Kathy, or is there another one?
Yes, it does. So tomorrow morning, you know, the intention is the Board of Assessors is going to submit into the Department of Revenue a tax rate for fiscal 2021 of $15.50 per 1,000 evaluation.
And what was last? What was last?
Last year's was 1585.
Right, so it's basically going down.
Yes.
Nicely.
But let me point out that the average tax bill is going up because all.
The values are going up.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I understand that, but, you know, at least we're maintaining the best we can.
I think a yearly increase of 161 isn't half bad.
Right, okay. Thank you very much, Kathy.
Okay.
Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good job. Yeah. Next on the schedule is Town Administrator's Report, update on COVID-19. Lisa?
Mr. Chair and members of the board, so as of today, this afternoon, Whitman had 30 new positive cases. That will bring our total number of cases up to about 56 in the last 14 days. We have a 4.71 positivity rate, but that remains, there's no change in that. So we have moved under the new formula that they're using with the state. We've moved from red to yellow status.
Okay.
So, you know, it's, the cases are going up, but compared to communities around us, it's a step in the right direction that we're maintaining, and we're not skyrocketing in a number of cases.
Basically going in the right direction.
Yes, yes. You know, again, we're doing something right. We're all practicing social distancing, wearing masks, and just make it, we're doing all the right things as far as washing our hands and just being mindful of what we need to do to keep these cases from spreading.
Good. Does anybody have any questions, Lisa, on this issue? Yes, Brian?
I know we talked about the, after the election, having the building done. Has that happened, or are we making plans to have that happen?
No, actually, the very next day, able cleaners did come in, and they deep cleaned the three common areas, the auditorium, and then on last Wednesday, Veterans Day, they came in and they did the offices, I'm sorry, they shampooed all the rugs and the floors, and then on last Friday, they came in and they cleaned all the offices.
Great.
So the building received an excellent deep cleaning.
Very good.
Yes, Randy?
Just something real quick that I kind of noticed, and I did have a quick conversation with one of the gentlemen from the cable ward. If you look at the town schedule tonight, as well as Hanson, the amount of meetings that we're actually broadcasting on cable on a Tuesday night, I think they have done a fantastic job keeping up with our meetings and not only the selectmen's meetings, but all the others, these other smaller meetings that go on throughout the week, but they all seem to be falling on Tuesday. And I think the comment was maybe we could possibly make a recommendation to ask for some consideration to kind of spread these meetings out from Tuesday at 7:00 to possibly some other days that it will not stretch the cable association staff so thin, that they're having a hard time, and they only have so many Zoom accounts and so many webinar accounts that for everyone to try to utilize these on a Tuesday is really starting to put some pressure on them. So let's try and, if other groups can pick another day other than Tuesday, and maybe Lisa could ask for that consideration with the other boards.
That's a good thought. I mean, our cable studio has been fantastic toward the town, both towns.
Yeah.
And they just do a heck of a job. So, yeah, whatever we can do to take some pressure off of them, I'm certainly sure Eric would love that.
And you know, the quickness that they turn these meetings around and get them on YouTube is amazing. Sometimes within hours, they're up on the YouTube channel. It's really amazing the work that they're doing.
Yep, we've got a great, great studio, and we're very, very lucky.
I mean, not only have they stepped up that way, just getting all these, you know, meetings and purchasing the accounts and whatnot, but after we sign off, like you said, Brian, that's what they're doing, that they then have to upload them to YouTube and get them to their own site so we can meet these, you know, meeting requirements.
Right.
They only have a couple people there. I know, we know that, and I, you know, we don't want to stretch them too thin because it doesn't look like we're going to be getting out of this, although we're in the right, going in the right direction or at least maintaining stability as far as COVID. Doesn't look like we're going to have any drastic changes.
Right.
In the next few weeks.
Yeah, sounds right. All right, on to the next, Lisa, state investigation.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the board, so let's see, back on October 30th, school committee member David Forth sent an email to Superintendent Simonak and committee, School Committee Chair Robert Hayes and some other school committee members, informing, stating that there is an ongoing state investigation into the school district, and the state is also actively investigating both the towns of Whitman and Hanson. Superintendent Simonak did share that email with us on November 3rd, just to let us know that Mr. Forth had sent this email. I attended the school committee meeting that evening to make sure that I could make eye contact with Mr. Forth on this. Of course, the minute you hear that we're being investigated by a state agency, one of our first phone calls is to alert our town council, to this, so it doesn't come out of the blue and sideswipe anybody. So of course, I made a call to our town council to let them know. Hanson, town administrator, also informed town council, as well as Superintendent Simonak. So there were three phone calls to town councils, and I thought I attended the school committee that evening to address Mr. Forth and ask him as a representative of the town of Whitman to provide more information on these investigations. I did question him point blank, asked what type of documents, just tried to get as much information as I could. I found that he was less than transparent with what he meant by these emails. He could not provide any information. He did mention the four state agencies who were the Inspector General's Office, Attorney General's Office, Division of Local Services, as well as the DOR. I basically, again, confronted him, saying that I have dealt with all four agencies on many occasions. I have resources, and neither Whitman nor Hanson nor the school district, all three confirmed that none of us have heard anything from any agency notifying us that we are being investigated at all. I did make four phone calls to each agency. The Inspector General Office did call me back, and I was able to speak with the investigator in the, she is in the Waste Abuse of Public Funds and Fraud Division. She did speak to me on a level as an attorney and as the interim town administrator, and basically stated if, she couldn't officially say whether we were or not, however, she did note that we would have received some type of notification requesting documents from at this point. And like I said, none of us have received anything. Hanson, the schools, nor Whitman have received anything. I have not heard back from the Attorney General's Office, nor have I heard back from the DOR. The Inspector General's Office did say that in their initial investigation, if they did find some evidence of any type of wrongdoing, what they do is either partnership or they will hand off the information to the Attorney General's Office as the OIG's office is not a prosecuting agency. Again, we've heard nothing from the Attorney General's Office. So at this point, although Mr. Forth has stated that he is going to be transparent and provide information and documentation, he has yet to provide anything to any of us. And the only thing that he has provided to Superintendent Simonak is the 1-800 phone number for the Inspector General's Office to actually file a complaint. So to this day, as far as I am aware, he has not really provided any of us with anything solid that we can follow up with. So I just wanted to update everybody on the nature of this and the status and what I've tried to do to find out as much as I can about it. But I thought it was very important that everybody know that where we stand at this point.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Lisa on this issue? I guess we'll just have to wait and see, we get notified. It's a shame that, you know, I just, I don't know. It is what it is.
It's unclear what his motive is, you know, what he is trying to accomplish. However, I do want to state that what he has accomplished is costing the taxpayers of Whitman and Hanson money in legal fees, because of course, the phone calls, that already starts the, you know, the billing for that. And so if, you know, I just would like that out there, that that is something that he has accomplished.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
I will say, being the school liaison, I do watch all those meetings, and thank you, Lisa, for going to that. And, you know, it was pretty clear to me that Mr. Forth didn't, there wasn't much veracity behind his statements. When you are sending 40 or 50 pages of documents like he stated to somebody, it's pretty tough to then accept that you don't know who you sent those to, what agency you sent those You know, I don't think there's anyone on this board that would disagree that, you know, we had an assessment issue. And I think as a board, we worked that out and figured out what our path is going to be going forward as a board and where we were looking to take this. What I can see is a member of the school committee that, or one or two members that feel they want to now act independently of their board and not accept the findings that our board, Whitman, sorry, Whitman, Hanson, and the school committee came up with, and that just doesn't seem to be suiting them, and that's what I took from that meeting. So, but again, my biggest take from that is how do you send 40 or 50 pages of documents to a state agency and can't provide a name or any other contact information? Frankly, he made himself look pretty foolish, in my opinion.
Right, it's a great observation, Randy, a great observation. Yes, Brian?
I concur with Randy. I watched that meeting twice, because I, when I first watched it, I kind of couldn't believe what I was watching, so I waited a few days and I watched it again. And Lisa was very thorough in her questioning about the matter at hand, and there was a little bit of selective amnesia on the part of Mr. Forth, so I, I don't know, there's some underlying current there that seems to be percolating, and the loser's going to be the, both towns and the school district with these costs of the legal fees and the bad publicity, and, you know, the whole thing is going to drag out this problem that we had and seem to be making people still anxious about the whole thing. So I'm really not sure what the end game is, but I don't think it's too good.
Right. I mean, we came, we came out with a solution, like it or not, we came out with a solution that both town meetings agreed for, agreed to, and then that's the end of it. For someone to get upset and bring it further, I don't know. We'll just, we'll just have to see where it shakes. It's that simple. So, Randy, any comments on it? No? I mean, not really, excuse me, Justin?
No, I think everything's, I think, I think everything's been summed up.
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda is the Community Preservation Act, Lisa.
Yes. So it was brought to my attention, actually, the other day, that the Community Preservation Act, folks out there don't know the outcome from the election. So I am extremely happy to report that the Community Preservation Act was voted by the town to adopt. It was basically the amount of votes, it was 4,591 for and 3,571 against, so that was a very good margin. We have some fun work ahead of us as we prepare to get ready for everything that the Community Preservation Act has to bring to the town. I've actually had some folks reach out to me already, who have expressed interest on being on the committee, so that's a very good thing. And, you know, just want to get out there, thank you to the voters of Whitman. This is, this is a very good thing for the Whitman, and I think it's really going to benefit us in the future and allow us to do some really spectacular projects that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise.
Thank you for that. Anybody have any questions for Lisa on it? Yes, Justin?
I just want to ask, so Lisa, our next steps at this point are to, I believe, at the next town meeting, codify who would make up that board before we actually begin collecting revenue for the Community Preservation Act account.
Yes, so we will be presenting a bylaw, article bylaw, that will implement the Community Preservation Act, and then at that point, too, we'll be working with the treasurer collector to set up the billing and that process. And the Community Preservation Coalition will assist us with that process. So there, like I said, there's some fun work to do. will assist us with that process. So there, like I said, there's some fun work to do, but it's it's really going to benefit us in the future.
Anybody else have any question?
Yeah, go ahead, Jess.
And just one more thing to add, when we begin that process, I'd just like to make sure we work with the Council on Aging as well, and and just get the word out on the generous exemptions that we did vote through on the thousand dollar property value as well as income exemptions and senior income exemptions.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, Brian?
Yeah, that was kind of my question was, the exemptions, is there an an application process or is it an automatic thing for these people that qualify for that particular thing? I don't recall hearing too much about that.
Yeah, so they'll be, most likely, they'll be a quick application process that we'll be able to, like I said, we can coordinate with the Council on Aging and through the Treasurer Collector's Office as well. But more of those details are going to be worked out in the very near future. I'm going to be having some discussions with, again, the Coalition to start all those processes. So, you know, we will kept, we will keep the residents right up to date as we learn the process for each, for the exemptions and things like that.
Great. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, saying none. Budget review, there's nothing under it. Do you have anything for us, Lisa?
Um, just that we, I met with, but the Chair, Rick Anderson, just came in, just to update me, they've continuing their meeting with the department heads. And just to go over the individual budgets and and as far as the selectman budget, I hope to, on Thursday morning, have some information on our insurance rates. Because right now with COVID, I really just don't have any guess of what this might do to the insurance rates. So Thursday, I hope to have that information and can plug that in so we know. I've been working with, you know, Ken, making sure that with Article Two, he has everything in order and he's doing very, very well with it, keeping us up to date on where we are with each department, what steps we're going to have to take. I mean, we've been going through articles to see what money might be left over that we can apply, things like that. So it's a very, very active process on the the budget.
Okay. Anybody have any questions to Lisa on that issue? Saying none. Uh, next on the new business, Regional School District C B A Municipal Representative, Lisa, on that.
All right, so I've been nominated to represent both Whitman and Hanson as the municipal representative as the school committee goes through the collective bargaining with the union. Hanson has, the Hanson is going to announce that this evening at their meeting as well, that they all agree that I should be the representative. And I'm just hoping that that the board here in Whitman agrees that I'm the right person for that. And as soon as we know, I will reach out to the schools to let them know.
You need a motion on that or no? You don't need a motion on that, do you?
Uh, yeah, we'll do a motion just to make sure.
Okay, do I hear a motion to make Lisa the Regional School District C B A Municipal Representative?
Who moved, Brian?
Do I hear a second?
Second, Randy.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So not really a question on the vote, but as far as the C B A itself, I'm I'm sorry, so that it doesn't give you a voting seat, Lisa, but until isn't, isn't there something at when the contract's getting ratified, you become a vote?
Yes. Yes, but at least this, this will, this will give me the opportunity to join in and sit through some of the, some of the sessions.
Yeah, just so, Randy, just to let you know what Seltzer Votec's process is. Usually when we we start the contract, which we're, we're going to start doing that, I have a meeting next week, starting that. What we usually do is when we come together with a contract for the, for all our unions at Seltzer Votec, we reach out to all the selectmen, town administrators of all the eight towns, if anyone would volunteer. Believe it or not, Brian has done it, what, three times, because nobody volunteers. And what Brian does is, we have eight members on our board. If it becomes a four-four vote on the contracts, Brian would be the deciding vote, whoever we choose. Okay, that's basically what, how we do it. All right, seeing none. We need to set the the schedule for December schedule. We need to have one on December twelve, December one. That's a, that's a given. To what, the most of our town meeting?
That's what you do, discuss the quorum.
The quorum, right.
Yes.
And I was thinking, well, two weeks later, the fifteenth, does that work for everybody, the first and the fifteenth?
I don't have a problem with it.
That works. I think that works.
Beautiful. Okay, then it'll be, our next meetings will be December first and December fifteenth. That exhausts the the agenda. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn and to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Yep, that's a good move. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And don't eat too much sugar. That being said, non-deductible, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Everybody say thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.